Bring the regular meeting of the Town and the Planning Commission meeting to order. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Siriop?
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Here.
Mr. Flanagan?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Clemens is absent.
Okay, sir, move to approve the agenda as presented.
It's so moved.
Second.
Oh, let me second that. And then for discussion, normally in September, we reelect the officers. Can we do that at our next meeting?
I prefer to do that whenever one is present instead of having an absence.
Yeah, yeah, seeing we don't have somebody there.
So we won't have.
Yeah, so the 25th, I think, is our planning, our work session.
Okay, so we will do the election of officers on the work session, which is not on the agenda. There's this motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments and correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations of the audience. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any matter not scheduled for a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to approach the podium and speak about anything that's not about the items on the agenda? Having done, moving on to unfinished business.
No unfinished business at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to new business, VAR 5938, 2025, for Gary and Melissa Deal.
Thank you. As you recall, the Planning Commission has the, within their prerogative, to provide recommendations to the Board of Zoning Appeals on variance applications that are submitted. This is an application that is going before the Board of Zoning Appeals on Thursday at their regular meeting. The particular request here is for a variance to the rear yard setback. The rear yard setback in this particular instance is 25 feet. The applicant is wishing to construct an addition out the rear of their house that would reduce that rear yard from 25 feet down to 11 feet to enable them to do an addition upon the house in that area. So they have stated that that's the only location that it's really feasible to do so, so we'll see what the Board of Zoning Appeals wish to do. Happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have on this particular case. As I said, you have the, it's within your prerogative to issue a recommendation, but you have no obligation to do so to the BCA.
Just a curiosity on the exhibit. I'm guessing the dining room is the front of the lot?
No, the dining room is the rear. That's where the addition is proposed to go out, to that rear portion. So the living room is on the front side with the garage.
Okay.
The rationale behind the 25-foot setback?
That's the rear yard setback, essentially to try and give space for private recreation for homeowners, to ensure that you try and have some green space between the, between the rears of properties.
That's from a primary resident. It's only about two feet from to have a shed or something in it.
Correct. Accessory structures do have a much more reduced setback requirement.
It looks like they're going to make their dining room and bedroom everything a little bit bigger. Are you watching?
We need not have an opinion if we're not so inclined, but it just seems if there's... So the policy is 25 feet, and if the poor policy should be revised, then if not, there should be a very clear basis for an exception.
So I would, I would go with a recommendation to approve it. It's a large berm behind it, so they're not on the road or anything. It's a small house.
Yeah, there are a lot of trees back there, isn't there?
Yeah.
Well, the trees are there as a buffer, which is required by current zoning.
The trees are also on an HOA parcel. That's not part of the subject parcel.
Right.
So nobody else is affected there? There isn't a house on the back side that would be affected? Would that make a difference?
I will point out, I will point out to the Planning Commission, there are some state code standards that need to be met for a variance. Those are listed within the staff report or that overview of application.
The zoning administrator has access, will take those into consideration?
With the Board of Zoning Appeals.
And the Board of Zoning Appeals will take that into consideration?
They will, but impact on others, or the fact that it does not have an impact on others is not part of the criteria that's listed within there.
Looks like they just want to build on that patio that's already existing.
Let's actually want to do an addition. Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, right.
But I mean, to your point.
Yeah, yes, sir. They basically have to indicate that not being able to add this is a hardship. Any other comments?
Well, it does say. The granting of a variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property.
I apologize. That is in there, but that's not grounds for the granting of it solely.
Yeah, but our threshold is, do we, will we, can we be helpful by offering an opinion? We have a strong feeling we would like to share with the board.
Consideration, in my opinion, if that were to be made, is what makes this situation unique versus others to grant the variance?
Right. If it has to be, could be a good rationale, could be reason for it to make an exception or overhaul the policy.
I guess the Board of Zoning Appeals also has to be cognizant of the potential for creating a precedent for, because you're up against a buffer that you're allowed to have or reduced offsets because of the buffer being in HOA parcel that's not buildable.
So it has a note in here about the strict application of the terms of this chapter would effectively prohibit or unreasonably restrict the use of the property. It is a very shallow backyard.
That's a small, 1,300 square feet is a small house, especially in that neighborhood.
Presumably, presumably, about, you know, where they were, where the square foot.
Yeah, but once you build on it, you're adding, you're spending more dollars on it to make it bigger.
Mr. Hoppo, would that create a non-conforming lot if they were to grant the variance?
It would. The variance would essentially permit that to be the case, but yes, it would be a non-conforming lot in that instance.
That's R1 zoning, right?
It's, I believe that's the case, let me confirm.
More than likely it is based on the neighborhood.
I believe so. At the time of the construction, the rear, the rear yard setback was also 25 feet, so it was built to conformance and...
Do we want to pass on a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals or just move on to the next one?
I have a problem with recommending it be approved because of the size of the house. But we don't have, we don't have to, we can move on to that.
This, uh, town ordinance, section 15, 2, 2399, subsection 5, that doesn't apply, right?
That's Code of Virginia, actually.
Okay. That's not, there is no...
Correct. There is no special exception process that would permit it.
Authorized as the Board of Zoning Appeals, grant variances.
It does say, when a property owner can show that the property was acquired in good faith or by reason of the exceptional narrowness, shallowness, size, or shape of a specific piece of property, by the time of effective date of this chapter, that applies, right?
That does apply, yes.
Or where, et cetera, et cetera, would restrict the best, the use of the property. And I think, I mean, it seems like there's a case to be made that that's exactly the case here, an argument to be made that's exactly the case here, and it seems to conform with, or it seems not to violate any of these conditions in the state code. But I'm, I mean, I'm guessing the zoning board is, you know, can do that analysis themselves. What can we say that would be value-added to their deliberation?
Does it typically come to us first before it goes to?
Yeah.
We've done a couple of these.
It's just for review in case we hesitate. They're rare gems. A strong opinion one way or another that an exception should be granted or not.
Well, we have a purview over things that the Board of Zoning Appeals might, we might see some angle, we might have an angle.
Well, a big part of the reason it comes to the Planning Commission is that, number three, that the condition or situation of the property concerned is not so, so general or recurring in nature as to make reasonably practical the formulation of a general regulation to be adopted as an amendment to the ordinance, because the Planning Commission does have the ability to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance. So if something is coming up in a recurring manner, the Planning Commission could identify that.
The policy is not good, but six, the policy is good, and people apply for exceptions.
Correct.
First one I've seen.
So I think if we don't say, make a negative recommendation, then that's tacit, you know, consent to whatever the zoning appeals board wants to do, and they can make the same analysis that we just made in the last 10 minutes.
So no action?
Jane may prefer to, you seem to be leaning towards making a favorable recommendation.
Well, I was, but then I'm looking at the other houses, the house to the left. Is it back at that same distance?
Built as far back as they could to make the front yard look larger up in the odd-shaped lots.
I guess. I just hate to...
Does that mean all the road, the houses along that berm are going to be complying for the same exception?
Possibility of setting up a precedent to do that.
Good point.
That's true.
It's probably doing something once.
Is there a policy revision here that would, that would make this a general case and improve the current code? Anything on your insight there?
That would be to then reduce the rear yard setback.
It is interesting on this particular house, though, they got almost twice as much front yard as they do backyard.
Yeah.
And it looks like the only reason the house is set back as far as it is is to line up with the other houses. Otherwise, that could be, the whole house could be forward, probably 20 feet.
Yeah, they could. You'd think they could build an extension on the front, except that's the garage, isn't it? I mean, it looks like...
The garage, actually, I think they built that garage.
And then there's a...
They made modifications to this house before.
It's a 10-foot storm sewer easement as well in the front.
Oh.
Typically, you don't, depending on the R1, you probably don't need to be that far off a storm sewer easement, even if it's exclusive 20 feet wide.
Well, can then, if you look up here, there are more houses backing on berms, and they look like maybe townhouses. Maybe the owners of those could say, we want to, I mean, is this a can of worms?
But, you know, all these houses right here, these three houses, they back up to trees, and behind the trees is 29. It's a four-lane highway.
Right.
So there's not going to be anybody behind them.
That's true.
With the real estate that they have in the backyard, it would be very difficult to be, to build an accessory dwelling structure.
They talked about an extension, I think, not a...
Right, but if they, as an alternative for more living space, you wouldn't, I don't, it would be very difficult to squeeze something like that in there, so this may be the only opportunity that they have without rearranging the front of the home.
Out of curiosity, the house on either side would reallow them to do the same thing? Would reallow them to do the same thing, the house on either side? Move within 11 feet of property line? Because I look at this, and if you do it for that one, you'd be able to do it for the other two.
That's why I said I was leaning that way until I looked at the picture, and they're all close to the...
But there's nothing behind them, that's...
I know.
There is a significant potential if, for a can of worms to be opened.
Or is there a way to generalize this and say, you know, setback 25 feet, except in cases where, and we find some way to describe the situation here?
I don't think we have to describe it. All we have to do is say, give a positive or negative or no answer.
I hear what you're saying. I guess what I'm saying is, again, I'm thinking about what Andrew just said, and if this is something that comes up, again, you know, we've got these two houses here, maybe it comes up in other situations around town that we're not seeing here, is there a way to describe that situation? Say, in that case, that justifies reducing the backyard setback? In all such cases, so that not everybody doesn't have to come to us, request an exception? I don't know the answer to that.
In this picture, is that a shed in the house next to them, or is that the house to the left of their house? Looks like a shed.
I believe that's the shed.
It does look like a shed.
You can see it on the aerial marks in the far corner of the property.
But the shed could tend to be within two feet of the property line.
The other thing is, if this is, even with three houses, it could still be an exceptional situation, and this is the only place in town where this happens. Three houses. They want to request a variance.
The highway behind them.
If they each want to request a variance, what's the big deal? It's not, you know, it's not unreasonable. They, you know, if the case, if we think the case is reasonable for these guys, it should be reasonable for the other houses. And if they want to request that variance, why shouldn't they?
What do you want to do, folks?
If Janie feels strongly that we should make a recommendation, I would not oppose her, but I don't, I kind of feel like, you know, do no harm.
That's what I was feeling at first, and then I saw the other two houses, and like you said, we're going to open a can of worms, aren't we? Hate to do that, it's their house and...
I don't see a problem opening it for the other two also.
Yeah, me neither.
We can give it to the BCA, they can fix it.
Recommendation, no recommendation?
I move we for this without recommendation.
Actually, it sounds, I'm leaning that way, too.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Oh, we didn't have, oh, you did, you were a second, okay.
Okay, VAR 5957, 2025, for Jefferson Home Builders, Mr. Director.
Yes, this is another variance request. In this instance, it's a request for a variance to a side yard setback. This is an interesting situation of a site plan that came in, was a, this is property that came into the town through the boundary line adjustment that occurred in 2022. This was a site plan amendment that was approved by the county in 2019. It required a side yard setback for these structures of 12 feet. It was approved by the town to move forward with the construction in accordance with the approved county site plan. The structures were built closer to the property line than was required and then was shown on the approved plans. One was built approximately four and a half feet, the other approximately two and a quarter feet off of the property line. So they are requesting a variance to the side yard setback and to the requirement to be in conformance with their approved site plan to allow the structures to remain in place.
So otherwise, it would not be...
They'd have to tear them down and move them?
Otherwise, they would have to tear them down and move them.
Couldn't persist as a legal law enforcement?
No, because it was not legally constructed.
Did they say...
Looks like they moved, set them back further so they could have the roadway behind the other buildings, I would say.
The thing, railroad tracks behind them, who cares? Yeah.
I hope they're not using the same surveyor.
Yeah, is there going to be a problem with the railroad?
Unless they're on the railroad property.
So this, this picture is showing where it should be?
That is showing what was approved with the 12-foot setback off of the property line.
And this is obviously what's actually there.
Correct.
Are they just saying, see, bail us out?
Say that again?
I'm saying it in a way that's kind of, that is a little glib, and I'm sorry if that happened, but are they just saying kind of, whoops, we made a mistake, bail us out? Or...
Give us intentional.
Is this variance being brought due to a zoning violation?
We have not issued a violation at this stage. This was brought to our attention when they came in for a proposed next phase of developing new structures, and we requested an as-built of the existing structures at that time, because this had come in from the county. The plans that they provided showed that these buildings were built closer than what had been approved, and at that time, we flagged it and sort of allowed them to try and remedy it themselves before we issued a violation notice. But if this variance is not granted, a violation notice will be issued.
How old were the buildings?
I beg your pardon?
When were the buildings built?
Last year.
Oh.
Last year.
Is there any peril or safety associated with the way it's set up now?
We have not evaluated that in terms of the setback off of the railroad tracks. Again, we were simply looking at it at the moment in terms of the deviation from the approved plans.
So, you know, the buildings are, they're made shorter and shorter to accommodate the roads, so it seems unlikely that they would have done that on purpose to accommodate it.
I'm sure they did it on purpose. But you know, don't we have things inspected?
Yeah, y'all are very giving.
Weren't the buildings inspected by the county?
They were inspected by the county, but the county is inspecting them per the building plans as opposed to necessarily the zoning.
Okay.
So nobody goes out there to actually look at them after they're placed?
We do for primary structures. These are accessory structures on the property, and so usually these ones are...
Not inspected.
Not inspected from a zoning perspective.
This is now town property, right?
It is now within the town boundary, yes.
Were it still county property, would this be an issue?
Again, it was the county plan that it was approved, showing the 12-foot setback requirement.
Ah, so it would be a violation of the county plan.
Correct.
But this doesn't have to be fixed for them to move on to their other project. This could just continue to be unaddressed.
Well, I've stated that I won't approve the other one until this one is essentially resolved.
So this is holding up?
This is holding up additional buildings.
And these buildings are actually there?
They're actually existing today, yes.
Are they stick buildings, or are they buildings they brought in and set? Do you know?
I am not sure of the nature of them. They're essentially the, they're the shelter structures that they use for shielding and protecting the wood that they have out there. I believe they construct them on site, but I don't know that for certain.
And these are...
Do these have sides or just the roof?
I believe that these are largely just the roof, essentially the...
They can just move them.
Or at least they may have some sides and some open access.
I guess, Mr. Paul Barnes?
So instead of, instead of 12 foot, they're down to two and a quarter feet. That's...
So again, the question is, do we have any value added to offer here? I mean, the zoning, the Board of Zoning Appeals is perfectly competent.
Yeah, is this going to be the final decision, Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yeah. Do we have any, is there a recommendation? Send a signal that, you know, an additional, do we see some peril that we're attuned?
I'd kind of like to not make a recommendation on this one also.
Why?
I, the cost of moving those buildings would be expensive, a lot, and if they're not causing any trouble now, and they haven't been for the last year...
I don't think it's going to be a lot.
I understand, but then again, build it the way you're supposed to build it.
I mean, why have a building restriction line then?
That's right.
That's true, yeah.
If this was residential, we wouldn't be looking at this because they'd be allowed two feet. This is commercial, so it's the zoning.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
You know, the only reason I can think of to recommend against it strongly is the precedent, you know? Could become, anybody could go over the line a couple of feet and say, well, you allowed the variance in that case.
Ten feet.
Don't bug us, yeah. Get out of our hair. So...
Ten feet.
Sorry?
Ten feet.
It's a lot.
They're over 10 feet?
It is a lot.
Was it 10 feet?
Yeah. Nine and three quarters.
So, Mr. Hoppo, am I correct, even if this is just, if it was only 10%? So if they were nine feet away instead of 10 feet away, you'd be able to administratively take care of this?
No.
Not in this particular zoning?
No, again, that would have needed to take, in terms of administrative variances, would need to take place prior to construction.
Okay.
This one, the issue here is the lack of conformity with the future site plan.
Okay, so it is.
That was making room for the road way.
Janie, I'm sorry, I'm a little slow tonight. Where are you seeing 10 feet?
It's a required 12-foot setback, and one of the buildings is setting two and a quarter feet from the property line.
From the approved plan.
Right.
Oh, so we're not looking at the line that goes over the property line, we're looking at the line, oh, no. Oh, okay, I see. So you did math.
Now, out of curiosity...
With great math.
How would this, how would we approve? Would we make it 12 feet, too, for commercial accessory buildings?
No. The towns would be two feet, however, there would also be landscaping requirements and buffering involved.
Not so. I put my shed in, and the requirement then was two feet, two feet from the fence.
Correct. But yours is not a commercial property. This is an industrial property that is, on the other side of the railroad tracks is residentially zoned property, and so the town requires...
What you're saying is commercial, they have to put up some type of barrier to block it, okay.
Correct. There needs to be screening and buffering. And so, under the town regulations, while the setback would be less, there would be those screening requirements as well.
Okay. And they wouldn't have that.
They wouldn't have that.
Is there a fee associated with an application, an appeal on the form?
There is a fee associated with the variance.
Do you know how much it is?
I don't recall off the top of my head, but the vast majority of it is actually the advertising cost, because it is advertised before going to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Is it in the hundreds or the tens of thousands?
I believe it's... I believe it's, I think it's 250 for the variance, and then we usually are running, I believe, around $600 in legal advertising costs with the newspaper per public hearing.
So, close, just under a thousand.
And are the criteria that the Board of Zoning Appeals uses to deliberate, to analyze, are they incorporated here?
It's largely that section 15.22309 of the Code of Virginia there, on that first page, and carrying on over to the second page.
So the other perspectives that we as commissioners might be able to bring up aren't, I think are not necessarily addressed. Here are, you know, the basics of safety, convenience, welfare, health. So that's the one, safety is the obvious one in this case. Is there any safety hazard created? And we don't have any information on that.
Correct.
She has some information on the safety implications.
Would you like to send a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals? Mr. Simmons?
I don't think we should recommend anything.
Mr. Simmons?
I would like to recommend that they don't approve, because we don't know what the safety implications are. It's close to the railroad. I don't know if rocks flying up from the railroad might hit the building, or people working in the building. I mean, I just don't know. There should be a reason why there's a setback policy. And if it's been violated, you know, then we should be able to examine what the implications, what the on-the-ground, real-world implications of that violation are. And I don't feel like we're able to do that on the basis of these drawings here. So I would recommend the conservative course, which is not to go forward.
Mr. Smith?
I agree.
I move that we do not send a recommendation and let the Board of Zoning Appeals do as they say, without our interference. But that's split decision.
So that means it advances without recommendation, right?
I mean, we didn't have a.
Oh, a formal vote.
Yeah. But my opinion is that we, we don't weigh in at all. But would you guys?
Oh, I agree, no recommendation.
Yeah, we have a tie. I'll make the motion, and we can vote. Or do we have some discussion?
Once you make a motion, and there's a second, there's plenty of time for discussion.
I move that we forward this application to the zoning Board of Appeals with a recommend not to grant the variance.
Is there a second?
Second?
Discussion.
Just not recommend anything? But that's not what you said? You recommended not to approve it.
Yeah, all I can do is repeat what I just said. I mean, there might be a safety concern here. We don't have any information. There should be a reason for that setback.
I understand.
Yeah, so, again, I'm just repeating myself.
There may be a reason for that setback, we don't know what it is. Let them figure it out.
We could say that.
Because right now, they think you have a reason for saying, no, don't approve it. You don't have a reason for saying, no, don't approve it. Understand, it's reasonable.
It says, yeah, it sets a precedent. If setbacks are in any way associated with the considerations of safety, welfare, convenience, then by establishing that precedent, I think we invite, violation seems like too strong a word, but we invite fudging.
I understand. And that's exactly why I said we shouldn't make any recommendation at all.
Well, the criteria, the reason, okay, the reason I'm taking the point of view I am is that the criteria that the Board, Zoning Board of Appeals apply don't include the criteria that we as the commission apply to our deliberations. The comp, print, and plan in general, but specifically health, safety, welfare, convenience. So here's a place where we have some, we may have some value added to offer to their deliberations, the boards of deliberations. We can chime in and say we have a concern about, I mean, the decision is still with them. We, this is, because we have this perspective, we can offer a point of view that we have concerns about, that there may be safety issues associated with this particular request. There may be safety issues associated with the general adherence to.
It's not so. Because it meets the town requirements, except for the, except for putting some shrubs up there. And there's no room to put shrubs.
Well, the reason I have a safety concern, the specific reason, is it's very close to the railroad. I mean, that's, you know, if there were, if there were trees back there, I'd say, ah, okay. But it's close to the railroad, and that can mean, I don't know what that can mean. I'm not sure how far away that is. And this is part of the issue. I don't, I don't feel like I understand the situation well enough.
And that's why we should have no recommendation, if you don't understand it.
I disagree, but that's unusual.
I understand.
Discussion? On the favor of sending a recommendation of denial to the Board of Zoning Appeals, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Moving on to other business, Mr. Hopel?
No other business at this time.
Follow-up items?
No follow-up items at this time.
Planning director updates on the Unified Development Ordinance.
Yes, so Town Council held their public hearing on the Unified Development Ordinance last week. We did receive some late requests for changes to the proposed zoning designation from properties that were shared with Town Council. Town Council wanted to receive the planning commission's input on these before choosing to act on the UDO. They also wanted to essentially set a cutoff deadline so that we didn't have continually recurring requests that would continue to potentially extend the process. So the deadline has been set of noon on this coming Thursday for us to receive requests from property owners for changes to their proposed zoning under the UDO. That will allow us time to pull together the planning commission's packet for your work session for next week, Thursday. We'll present the applications or the requests that we've received at that time for the planning commission to provide recommendations to Town Council on those particular properties. And then council will have the opportunity to adopt or implement those changes as they see fit at their next regular meeting in October.
How many additional applications have come in?
We've received, three came in prior to the council meeting. One that had been previously considered by the planning commission, and this letter is related to that as well. Two ones that the planning commission had not previously considered. Since then, I've had conversations with two other property owners who are contemplating submitting requests to the planning commission.
Will the applicants be allowed to speak at the work session?
We do not have any public comment at the work session, and so we've, those that I've spoken to, we've advised to make sure that they submit their justifications in writing as part of their request.
And all of those applications received by noon on the 19th will be in our packet?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Anything else we should know about that?
That was the large thing I'll defer. If Ms. Schmidt has anything she'd like to add from the meeting.
How was your experience?
It was messy, to say the least, but just trying to be fair to everyone, I guess.
May I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Did you feel properly supported by us, the commissioners, in terms of our discussion, our findings, the notes made available?
Absolutely.
So that you're comfortable representing in that meeting the views of the commission? Okay. That's very important.
We did share with council the findings that the planning commission had made in terms of making their recommendation.
Okay.
Will this be among, this plot be among the ones that we discuss?
It may be. The reason I say it may be is that there's some discussion among certain council members as to the appropriateness for repeat requests to come in for properties that the planning commission has already considered. So I'll be looking for clarification from the planning, from the council committee at the 3P meeting next week, which takes place on Tuesday. So it will likely be part of the packet, but I will inform the planning commission prior to discussion as to what guidance we've received from Town Council's committee on that matter.
Can we hand this back to you, and you hand it to us next week?
Certainly can. As I said, it was requested to be provided to the planning commission.
No, I understand. I'd rather look at it next week.
Save some color printing?
Certainly can.
Is the 3P meeting here?
In this room.
In this room, what time?
3P meets at 10, 9:45 on Tuesday, next Tuesday. 9:45.
Any more updates, Mr. Hopel?
That's all I have at this time.
Moving on to commission members' discussion. Ms. Schmidt?
What do you think, thanks?
Mr. Pitt Simmons?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cero?
Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Let me show you this.